Okay.
Thank you.
So.
See, we.
We should get an air. Where, where, right, right, upstairs.
Senate is.
Upstairs. Okay, so you're still here. Three.
Okay, so that's.
So. Right. Okay.
Great.
I think you did that.
How are you yesterday?
Like, how are you?
I'm good. Thanks for having us.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming.
Horizons. So what? So you guys go. This was just that something.
They just out here now.
It's two weeks.
Hi.
So.
How.
Yeah, that's great. That's great.
Thanks for having us. Come on here. Do you see my.
I'm glad, then we were talking about this since February. I'm glad we. It's like, I don't think we catch the. I'm very, very. So you're interested. Like, that's really nice of me. Hey, man, let's call room.
Like.
Okay.
Mister Malloy.
Here.
Mister Bernard.
Here.
Mister Hernandez. Awesome.
Okay. Uh, we call the special public meeting with our state representatives. Uh, June twenty, today at three, at the Agribuilding here. Um, s- uh, no, no public comments to be taken in this meeting. If you're asked a question or something pertains, we can allow. At that time. Uh, the reason for this meeting is. We had a chance to sit down with Senator Moreno and talk about common issues that we had between local and federal government. And we like the opportunity to officially sit down with our state representative Nick Santucci. And David Thomas to talk about some state issues where our county job and your state jobs combined, where we can serve the people.
Sure.
Um, together in a better capacity. Um. My overall statement, I guess, would be. At first, I apologize for my voice. It's been like this for a week.
Too many late nights, huh?
I just don't know when to stop talking.
No, maybe that's it. Maybe that's it. Now, we'll put it at the first.
And I can't find a stretch where I could just be quiet for a day. Um, and I apologize for being late too. I lost my phone, which. If anybody has an iPhone, please don't ever, ever, ever forget your password. You'll go through hell for a week if you forget your iCloud password. I did, but they finally were able to save it, but it, it was a battle. Um, but again, I want to thank you for being here. Um, we come across many things where we require more assistance than what we provide. Uh, most of the funding, of course, and we've got some big projects where. We serve the same constituency that you do. Um, you guys cover a whole county as we do. Um, but combined, you guys cover all of our constituents, and there are many issues that. Make it outside of our borders, that we're a part of, things that involve Lake River. Chamber Commerce, East Gate, there are bigger regional projects that we also will work together with you. Some of the big concerns we have. Are, um, some capital improvement projects where we're finding ourselves a little short. Dockbound Corner, nine one one center. Uh, but there's also some other issues. Uh, of late, of course, Mister Thomas, I'm glad you're here because. You're the, the talk of the state right now with, um, your, your, um, House Bill three.
Three five. There's also three fifty-five.
Yes.
Confused, but three thirty-five.
Um, so.
More to come to Commissioner.
This is something to, of course, as you know, you know, we want the facts out on that, and there are a lot of people. Afraid, you know, we could potentially lose eight and a half million dollars inside village, which is, if you follow papers. You'll know that we are stretching every nickel we can right now to not raise taxes and not raise sales tax. And. Uh, so we'd like to discuss that. We'd like to discuss also. Potentially, um. Assistance we could with ODOT, with their, uh, property they have in Hubbard. Uh, that they're trying to stop us in the engineer. And maybe we can work a better negotiation out for the county in regards to that. And, uh, those are the big main points that I have, Commissioner.
Yeah, I mean. Those are, those are great points, and I'm sure there are more come up as we talk, but I, I just want to thank both of you for the, uh. Availability and S six. Access that we add to you guys. I mean, I, I talked to you guys several times, uh, on the phone, and. You guys are, are a great leaders for us, and I know, uh. And when we ask you for, for certain projects and, uh, and, and dollars, they do everything they can to bring money back to Trumbull County, so. You know, we've got two great leaders here, and, uh, I, I'm really proud of you guys, except, I don't know, I got some questions on that three thirty-five. I think we have, but we're gonna have to talk about that, but, uh, also, you know, um. I'm sure you guys are aware of the paper we hired of. Grant consultant, and they're here. K O, they're here, and they're gonna help us bring in more state and federal dollars, and that's something that I. I, uh, campaigned on and, and, and the whole board thought it was something that we needed to bring in more state and federal dollars here, and, uh. We're really looking forward to that. Like, Commissioner Malloy said, you know, we have, we have the Coroner's office, and we have the dog pound. We have nine one one, so. We, we're needing a lot of funds there. The governor was in, I think, a year and a half ago. He said something about getting us some, some dollars, so, uh. We have K O here, and, um. We're gonna have them reach out to the governor's office and see if we can get some, uh, state funds in here for that, uh. It's really needed. We know that. You just can't put it on the backs of taxpayers. So again, thank you guys for coming and, uh. We'll wait for your comments.
Yeah, I guess, our seniors, they represent.
Yeah, sure. Well, thanks, thanks for having us today. I, I appreciate being included and, and, you know, I'm always willing to. To learn and understand what, what the county's looking to accomplish. Uh, I think a great move, uh, for you, the county, to hire a consultant. Um, and the reason I say that is because they will help you get organized on projects. On architecture drawings, on the things that we need in the legislature. Um, and Commissioner, I was saying to Commissioner Bernard, uh, uh, before you arrived. You know. We are, we in, in the state legislator, the state legislature are legislators. Our job is to write the laws for the state of Ohio. You are executives of your county, so a little bit of different dynamics. Between the jobs that we do versus the jobs you do. You have. Funding sources and things that you can pull out of and fund different projects. We have to get ninety-eight other members of the legislature on board to believe that a project for Trumbull County is important. But that's why you hired all the people that, that are here in the room now. So that they can help you get organized and understand the dynamics and bring it down to Columbus to us. We're happy, and I, I of course won't speak for Representative Thomas, but I'm always happy to fight for what we need here in Trumbull County. But getting organized, I think, is the first step, and, and I think, you, you know, you're on. Step one of maybe a, a ten-step plan into getting some of those resources back. Into Trumbull County, but, but appreciate the opportunity to be here, happy to answer specific questions about what's going on in Columbus. I'm sure Representative Thomas is happy to talk about House Bill three thirty-five, which I'm supportive of. And, um, and, you know, we can go from there. Rep Thomas, if you'd like to.
Thanks for having us. Um, we talked kind of early in the year. Ashville County does something similar where they get together with their delegation once a year, just to. Think on the record, here's our priorities, here's what we're looking at, capital dollar-wise or policy-wise. And then we all are kind of on the same page for, okay, this is. This is what we need to steer our efforts financially, or especially capital budget. I think that's a great place to, to hone in on. You know, where are your actual, um, step ones or your top priorities? What can we help you with from now until, what, capital budget? I'm still obviously learning timeframes and everything like that. You guys are awesome. So in terms of what do we need to help you with now until October, to boot prints or. Cost of land, or what is it like to have a budget wise? Uh, it's now a great time to get that on paper in terms of where work to look to and. Happy to answer some questions about other goals as well. And of course, budget-wise, next Wednesday is the goal in terms of actually voting out the House and the Senate passed budget. So we'll be in Columbus, um, starting Monday. Be meticulous Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday with the actual budget. Goal is to have it done probably two A M. on Thursday morning.
Right.
Uh, I got some chocolate covered coffee to be going through through Wednesday night. Um. There's still a lot that has to negotiate, discuss to the chambers and the governor, of course, and so by. So lots still kind of up in the air with, with that. I know we both submitted, um, President Tucci was phenomenal in getting. Literally millions of dollars, our state tax dollars coming back to Trumbull County in the House pass version. The Senate took pretty much all of that out, um, literally all of that out. So, you know, we're still fighting essentially for those original dollars that, uh, President Tucci and myself and others. Got into the House side just for Trumbull alone, initially everything else is happening. So we're, we're hopeful.
We want to establish a couple of things too. We understand every dollar that we get, or every dollar that you get. Started out in someone else's wallet. It was the fruits of someone else's labor, someone else's hard work, so we don't take that lightly. We have to spend someone else's dollar for services. Secondly, we find ourselves a lot. Having to live under something called the O R C, or I reverse code. A lot of things we don't like. Our constituents don't like, so we tell them to see you guys, because you make the O R C and you can change it now. Of course, we know there's a majority needed to do that, and you can't just change a lot in a snap of fingers. We have to work within the confines of what we can legally do. We don't do things just because we want to, or especially when it comes to taxes or spending, and neither do you. So that's something we want to clarify too, to the public. There are things. You need, you have to work under things we have to work under that are part of our jobs. We don't ever want to raise taxes on anybody or impose taxes or levies or fees. But that's how government works. That's how we get our services. That they, I mean, everyone likes to pick the phone up in an emergency and have an able to show up. Or a police officer.
Sure.
When things go bump in the night, or to drive on a road that isn't gonna break your axle.
That's great. Which, House of fifteen, we're working on.
They like to hit that switch, you know, electricity. So, um. This is, uh. Uh, the dialogue, I'm, I'm really glad we have, and we need to do it also eventually with our state senator. Uh, because I know she's part of the process too. When it leaves you guys, it's gotta go through her and her group, so that we're doing what we can.
Especially for the capital side. Like, if we're on the same page on the capital budget, I think that will really almost guarantee. We'll have that ability to have funding coming in at both sides to create.
Let's, um. I guess, let's start with what's. What's cooking right now that's out there that could change things. Of course, we got. The elephant in the room is one, but I, I know you've got some things too that are. Big softballs first.
Yeah, well, so just to give you a dateline, I think Rep Thomas did a nice job. We're in the middle of the budget cycle, so what that means is we're negotiating, uh. Uh, marijuana, uh, medical or marijuana policy just in general. We're talking about property taxes, what that looks like. So, you know, oftentimes when a piece of legislation is introduced. I always joke that everybody becomes Chicken Little. Everybody gets really nervous and scared, and I always try to tell folks. A, a bill has a long way to go from when it's introduced to when it becomes actual law. So just be patient as the process goes, and I say all that to say, Rep Thomas's House Bill three thirty-five. Parts or components of it may be incorporated in the budget bill, but there's no guarantee even with that. So we're still waiting to see what property tax looks like, property tax reform does look like. The Senate also introduced, uh, income tax cuts, um. Which, um, is good or bad depending on whatever lens you want to look at it on. Um, we're waiting to see what that looks like. You know, have, whenever you cut taxes, you know. I always say, and Rep Thomas could probably articulate it better than me, because this is his area of expertise. Tax policy is like a Jenga board. If you pull one taxing out. It could all come, the whole system could come crumbling down, and so. Understanding how taxes work, which he does it far better than I do. Um, is very important when we're coming into a budget. Um, now with some of the projects you outlined, Commissioner. Why the budget is important right now is because the legislature is going to give money to the executive branch. So that the governor can fund the state for the next two years. That's where a lot of your grants come from, and a lot of your funding sources for some of the projects you outline. Will get, so whenever you apply for a grant, you never apply to the Ohio House of Representatives grant. You always apply for a Ohio Department of Natural Resources grant, or an Ohio Department of Commerce grant, or Department of Development. And so my point to you is, is as we're understanding and trying to identify how we're gonna fund the state for the next two years. That's where you're gonna see pockets of money opening up. Where you can tap in and try to apply and bring those dollars back through grants or other funding sources, even at the federal level too. Um, and so that's, I, I guess that's the best update I have for you. I've worked on, you know, a few specific bills, but. Um, I, I don't know if, if you want me to go through my portfolio of legislation today for the relevance of this conversation. Uh, but Rep Thomas, do you want to talk a little bit about three thirty-five and what that may look like? Yes, let's hit on the tax policy side, and then definitely.
When it dives into some of your capital budget, where you might, I work on, I see that. Um, so. Property tax policy, obviously, we all know, state of Ohio, property owners were tapped out. Uh, the crisis. I know you personally ran on that. I know Commissioner Hannah, her native ran on that. That was my essentially campaign, which is just, this system is completely broken. It's out of whack. Um, which in the last five years purely cannot continue. In fact, there is a good number of folks out in Ohio that are trying to make sure it doesn't continue with this constitutional amendment. Not sure how much you guys followed that at all. Uh, they are tremendously picking up steam. They had about ninety signing events over the weekend. At several even Republican headquarters. So Republican parties are actually starting to get behind this. And we're trying to show last legislature have really not. That's not Mr. Tucci's fault. That's not Senator O'Brien's fault. That's just the nature of what the last five years have been on the state legislative side. So we're essentially making up for really not that much policy change over the last five years and five months. To show our taxpayers, here you, we know you're tapped out. We know huge increases have happened, and it's not been by a vote, it's been by. Just the process of how our tax policy works. So. Essentially, um. What we've been doing steadily, uh, is introducing bills, working on policy that separates out value increases from property tax increases. So that's largely been focused on the school side. Schools are sixty to seventy percent of the property tax budget. Um, we've been essentially getting at their policy quite a bit. Twenty mil four has been number one issue across the state.
Sure.
Um, House one eighty-six, House one twenty-nine gets at that specifically. Property owners that are in Trumbull County, with those two bills alone. Will see differences in their bill starting in January of next year. Those two are in House Bill three thirty-five. On top of that is budget. Budget commissions vary all across the state. Auditor, treasurer, uh, currently prosecutor, and the House passed budget. We changed that to a commissioner, the chair of the commissioners. Senate brought that back as being prosecutor. That's essentially the oversight. For taxpayers in between when they're able to vote on levies. Right now, not much authority, not much power. Truly a lot can be done to give an extra check for those problems. So that bill is a standalone bill, House Bill three oh nine. It's also in House Bill three thirty-five. Um, the big aspect with House Bill three thirty-five that impacts you all. And impacts other entities besides the schools are, is that inside militaries. So inside village, it's your base, ten mills for one percent of the value. Been on every property in state of Ohio for over a hundred years. Um. And it's applied directly to property values. So as property values increase, people's tax bills have increased as well because of that. So you all receive about eight point eight million dollars every year from your portion of the inside military, from every property owner in the county. In twenty twenty, that was six point five. So in a sense, people's taxes have been actually raised, property side. By about two point three million dollars every year since twenty twenty. And that may go towards. And when people are looking at the tax bills, they're seeing go on. Don't have any votes to show where did that money actually go. That's where that frustration, I think, comes in. And so we're looking at essentially, if we're gonna give people. Decreases on their tax bills. They need them, especially in the last five years. If we're gonna try and fix the problem moving forward so that the values work again, which. I don't know if you talked to Martha, at least in Ashville County, we're on the same cycle for property value updates. Ashville is seeing another thirty percent increase happening. So despite the catastrophic issues that happened last update here in Trumbull, will happen again. For payable in twenty twenty-seven, if we don't actually get at those number increase pieces. So this bill is, it's, it's very bold. Um, Speaker actually called it one of the more draconian options that are out there. But it gets at the heart of essentially what our property owners have in base. Now, getting back to, you know, flipping the budget, I think pieces of this will be, because the Senate agrees with a lot of. Our language when it comes to schools especially. Limiting types of levy, schools can levy, limiting carryovers for schools, budget commission language, those types of things. Will they agree with the inside village piece? That's still a lot of negotiation back and forth. I'll tell you that, um, Senate President on Wednesday said it's kind of off the table for him to eliminate all of inside village. But, um. I think there's probably something in between that we'll be able to negotiate. And that gets at, the more we decrease inside village, which happened way back nineteen thirty, the legislature actually took it from fifteen mils now to ten mils, so it's happened before. More we decrease that, the more future spikes property values are is crazy. And the more folks will have control over what they're actually voting. So we're trying to diversify that property revenue. You guys are unique in that you have sales tax, you have property tax. And you have other revenue sources like fees and licenses. If you look at the county as a whole. Or DVD, your children's services, your senior stuff. You're still very property heavy. Which is fine if that's what the property owners, the voters want, but. What we hear almost on a daily basis still is that there has to be more of a balancing between what property owners pay versus. People's sales tax pay, now the village, city, and school side, or folks that are even taxing. So when you. Three legs, school, stool philosophy. Three legs, property, sales, income. If one's out of whack, it's too big. Stool falls over when you sit on it. That's what we've essentially gotten to with our property system across the state. And we're trying to act fast and act strong for property owners before this amendment gets on the ballot. Imagine if all your property taxes were the one. And what that's going.
That's the, that's the option.
That's what we're trying to prevent with some decreases and some different forms. But I know it's, it's scary. That's a lot of money for you all revenue-wise. But it's also been a lot of extra increase that our property owners have been paying for the past five years. That they haven't actually. On. Or been able to direct where that money goes. So we're trying to balance the property owner taxpayer side with those essential services. Big preamble. Go ahead.
But, but when we. I mean, first of all, I, I think our property taxes need to be decreased. I don't know about eliminating all of our revenue. That I'm still. Thinking about that, but. And then I talked to school super defendants. I talked to law enforcement people. I just have. I have the sheet here that I, I just got today. I'm the Commissioner's Association. Everybody's against it. Because they're saying, once you take that away, then they're gonna have to come back and have all these levies. You know, in, in our, in our county, we're gonna have to have township levies. We're gonna have to have township, sorry. But, well, but, you know, schools, you know, they're, and they're saying, you know, what, we're never gonna pass a levy again, because everybody's gonna commit for, for money. And, and everybody here is against it, and, I mean. I'm for lowering property taxes, but I, I'm not sure I'm for eliminating. Oh, here, just taking it all the way off, and then. Then we're gonna have to go back to the districts. They're gonna have to pass the tax. When, when your counties and everybody's gonna be looking for money, you know, they're only gonna pass so many levies, and then, then they're gonna say that's it. Two aspects of that.
One, agreed. I don't think property tax elimination is the right approach total. We need to have a balance with our revenues, and that includes property taxes. Second one, though. You're right. I think the voters. They've been paying this. They've been essentially forced to pay these higher taxes without having their say over. If it should be maybe a slightly higher sales tax, or maybe having an tax to the city, for example, instead of having their property taxes spike. So we're essentially saying the voters should have a say over that amount. And. Possibly the voters may say, you know, the total amount that I'm paying for the county for these X, Y, and Z services. That's just not, it's too much. I don't think I need those many services. Or you have other folks say, you know, I'm perfectly good in paying a point two five percent higher sales tax. If it means I can save a couple hundred dollars on my property. Um, that's gonna be a question that we have to give to voters. And not just continue, which we purely cannot continue what we've had over the last five years. That will truly break the system. Especially with your increases that are coming from twenty seven. So that, that's gotta change. Now, is that moving forward? Yes, I mean, for sure, but if we're looking at the number of increases they've had over the last five years. Our taxpayers are saying, I didn't have a say over that. It increased tremendously. I want to be able to at least direct that. So. I think taxpayers will support the things they want to support. Your, your place, your fire, your EMS, for example. Will taxpayers sign on to pay more for their parks, for example, or some of the schools will probably not be able to make up the difference, I think, for sure. You know, that's gonna be up to essentially those voters, but the current system of not having them with a say. And then continuing to have the increases when the values increase. I don't think that's right.
Well, I, I agree with you. I think the voters should have a say, but, but. What I'm saying is, you take that away, and then, and you pass a levy, and then they're gonna say, well. I got, I mean, we should be getting those services, and then, then we're gonna have to say, wait a minute, no, no. Your levy was for schools. It wasn't for running, um, county government, and so. You have that levy, and then we're gonna have to come along and say, well, here's another levy. Then, then you have police and fire. They're gonna have to come along with another levy, and everybody's gonna have all these levies. And I just don't think they're gonna understand. What's going on. I, I just. I'm just not sold on the approach. I, I think we need to decrease taxes, but I don't know if this is the right way.
And I think fear, same thing is. We know the bottom money's only so big. And if you. Lower the leg of that school per se. It's putting on us to raise our county portion of the sales tax, to make the commissioners tax the people. Instead of the state taxing the people, which makes the state look great.
But the state doesn't tax the people, Commissioner. The property taxes, the state doesn't collect any of those property tax dollars.
Right, but you mandate what the auditors collect. You tell them what the amount is.
That's not true. So, so essentially, the state process is the valuation aspect. We say every three years.
Right.
And then, um, we say what the values are. The voters have approved some of those tax rates. But then you all, with your inside village, for example, or the schools or the twenty mil four. That applies directly to those higher values.
Right.
And then you all decide, could we accept that extra money, or do we decrease our tax rates? So from the state side, we actually just say, what do you value with this? You all decide how much revenue you're actually collecting.
Yeah, but when you say what the value is, that, that automatically raises, so it taxes.
It actually doesn't. If, with the inside military, it is applied directly to those higher values. But you all as receiving entities at the county level, schools, townships, villages, cities. You're receiving that extra revenue. You can actually decrease your tax rate. Or say, we're just gonna keep the same revenue coming in. This extra increase that we could have gotten, we're not going to accept. Um, or decrease actually your current rates too. So a lot of folks don't know that.
Either way, we get to be the bad guy.
But, but you're in charge now, Commissioner, of your, of your tax, your property tax.
In a sense, you are increasing taxes on folks now by accepting that increase. You could be the good guy and say, we're not going to increase our revenue. We're actually gonna decrease tax rates. And let the voters decide, and they want it to be more on the property side or more on the sales.
You have that ability now to do that, right? Did that has nothing to do with anything.
Re, reevaluation, we can say no to that.
You can say no to your increase, as if it never happened. The schools can say no to their increase, townships, these villages. You don't actually have.
The increase happens what, every, what, three years, three years?
Revaluations happen every three years. And then it values go up.
So the next one, we can say no to that.
Yeah, you can, in twenty twenty-seven. You'll actually be able to, well, in fall of twenty twenty-six. Martha will essentially say, here's our higher values. Here's what this is gonna mean in terms of extra revenue coming into you. You all can say, actually, we're gonna forego that extra revenue. We're not gonna, we're gonna extra money. We're gonna decrease our tax rate. Most folks don't know that or realize that.
That's right. Does that tax rate also apply to the schools?
To you?
When we say no to that.
Each entity has their own society.
Right, so the Board of Education would have had it, the local Board of Education, so they can say no to that too.
Correct. That's right. Yep.
Yeah, so for the past six to eight months, we've been hearing from local government folks that. That say what you say, Commissioner, that call your state rep to fix your property taxes. And now Rep Thomas has a proposal, and all local governments are saying, well, we don't want this proposal. But the alternative could be catastrophic if that amendment passes. So. You know, right, so.
I get your frustration. This has been a system for a hundred years where we've. Looked at inside village or, or told entities, hey, you don't have to accept, or don't collect a full amount.
Well, but the general public doesn't understand that the state doesn't collect.
Three thirty-five passes, and then they still have that petition going. I mean, so.
I think.
It may not, they're still out there, irregardless, what happens.
It'll still be on the ballot. I have to go down and have to show it on the ballot. It'll be likely not this November, but next November. And my fear is, we don't do these big things. Next January, February, third of the state gets another thirty percent spike on their tax side and their value side. And if you still accept that money coming in. Voters are more frustrated, and they're saying, well, we didn't vote for this increase. We still got it, so why not just blow up the system and call it dead?
Right.
So what did, what does your petition, if they're passing? What does it mean?
It's three sentences. All it says is, the ability to, uh, tax real property. Goes away on January first after the amendment passes. So if it's on the November twenty-sixth ballot. You will no longer have any property taxes on January first to twenty seventh.
Throughout the state.
Yes, throughout the state. That's right. Yeah.
And they're, they're frustrated. They're upset. These are folks that, you know, have seen their increases. And got some responses from the state for changing policy, or locals shifting it around. But I, I also realize. Removing all inside village, well, that's a big change all at once. And I can really get that. That's six months for you to respond. I don't believe the full elimination of inside village will, will still be on the table. My guess is maybe, you know, four mills at most might be actually what is negotiated now. That shows people, do you think their tax bill less than that? But kind of my ask, and I was with schools this morning in Medina, I've been traveling all around the state, talking with locals every day. Is to think about, can you essentially shift? And if some people say, well, tax shift isn't really a tax decrease. It is for those that are most harmed on the property side.
Right.
Your seniors, your farmers, your big property owners.
Right, right.
If you move it over to a sales tax, then that gives people a little more ability to say how much they actually wanna spend and what that looks like. Doing it voluntarily, you guys are essentially saving.
Sales tax is gonna go from six point seven percent to twelve percent.
It, no, actually, if property tax is eliminated, it'll go to twenty percent. Um, but so we don't want that. We don't want that because that then hurts really, we're gonna need sales tax relief.
And, and it, oh, if it goes to twenty percent, you know, how much more are we gonna get? As a county, we'll probably get the same amount, maybe, maybe a little bit more and everybody's gonna say, well, we're giving you twenty percent sales tax, but we're not gonna be getting all that.
It's that happy medium of decreasing the property side that right now is over exaggerated. Having that a little more on for you guys being sales tax for villages and cities.
Why not, why not build and just remove the over exaggeration? And if you say it's, it's over exaggerated, they keep raising it, why not cap it and just stop it where it is? And then that would be a lot of people, your property is worth what you sell it for.
So that is the California model. Um, that's an option. The problem with that though is that it actually hurts, so if you're in your home for forty years, you're paying taxes out of the valley when you bought it forty years ago. It's great for you to help seniors, but we have a housing shortage in the Mahoning Valley. And if we had that type of policy, where do all those property tax increases then go? Fire. It goes on those new homes that we're trying to get people into. Now all of a sudden, your new homes are tremendously more expensive in terms of the overall cost. And you're actually just pushing, helping seniors, but then you're really impacting those new homes that we actually get.
It's not feasible, actually. Well, if we crush, crush people in Ohio.
But if we separate value increase from tax increase, so when your value goes up, really, it only actually increases your tax bill if you vote for that increase. That's handling the ten mil um four as handled the twenty mil four, which is what we're essentially doing in this bill.
Okay, you said that county could, can say, you know what? They reevaluate property taxes that you don't have to take that.
Mm-hmm.
Cause any counties in the state of Ohio refuse it.
Erie County uh does not collect any inside. Um, Butler County, they refused it. Uh, Geodes County, Ross County, um, they decreased theirs along with other entities as well. I mean, we decrease that at any time? Yeah, you can actually decrease that today. So that will impact tax bills today. For January twenty twenty six, you all could say, we're gonna go back to what we were collecting pre pandemic, we're gonna take place. And that will probably be a handful of mill decrease for you, decreasing that burden.
Yeah, you would be, you would be one of the, the few in the state that have done that.
But voluntarily.
Right, voluntarily, but that's what.
Our schools will lose money or anyone that's based on village would lose, potentially lose money.
You all, just you, just the commissioners, because you, you collect property tax. The other, the school districts, they, their board of educations would have to also pass their own resolution or whatever to send those dollars back. But you're only responsible for you and what you collect, correct?
Yep. Represented in, in these conversations, five years ago, we would have never had them, you know, post.
How would that affect your senior levy or?
So your senior levy doesn't collect inside village. Right, your inside village is inherently your general.
What about it? I see Gary's, Gary here. What about our veteran services? They get a, they get a percentage of our knowledge.
So veteran services, yes, half a mil worth of value, what that happen would generate. But it doesn't actually directly come. I assume you all do it how we did it nationally a lot. Where like first week of January, the county just transferred all that money over to. So that money isn't actually coming in from inside village. You could say it's the county, well, we're using the inside village to cover that um, that total cost that's will transfer. But really, you're using your sales tax, your general levies, any of that money coming in to cover what would be generated from half a mil if you were to have an actual levy. So under this bill, you would still be covered. That money would still be transferring um over. It just wouldn't, wouldn't be coming then, you could save inside village later on in the year. But that transfer that first week of January would still.
We can cut that at any amount that we, that we chose.
So you all just say, you, you have resolutions to the budget commission saying, um, we, the commissioners would like to decrease our inside village for next year by point five mils. Um, and that would be roughly X amount of money, for example. Um, or you could do that kind of every year. If you were to say to the voters, hey, we wanna pass a half percent sales tax. We'll generate this much. We're gonna decrease your property tax by this much. We all know that twenty five percent is paid for by tourists. So we're actually cutting then total burden that's paid for by the property owner by twenty five percent, removing this money from here to here. And that's just an idea, that's a thought. Um.
But just understand.
Right, we are losing more money.
Well, yeah, so under household three thirty five, your taxpayers then would not have that full assessment of the inside village from the county, city, village, school on their tax. They would then be able to decide if you replace levy on or a sales tax, how to replace that if they were going to. Um, if the inside village piece of household three thirty five has not been budgeted and that's put aside. The rest of our property tax reform efforts, you all will be impacted that's right now by the budget commission. Where the budget commission would look and say, let's say your um senior levy, I know this isn't the case, grandpa always helped me. But your senior levy, let's say you had a ten million dollar carryover, tons of cash in hand, but you're still charging the property owners that have a tax rate. Budget commission will look at that forward and say, you have too much cash, you're not using it, taxpayers are giving you money, but it's not necessary for decreasing. That's more common in your DBs, your children's services at the county level. They probably have too much money and decrease their tax rate. Usually schools are that way and townships.
So we can't lower taxes in some of those areas that are sitting on money.
It'll look like a hero, the, yeah, the budget commission will have a role. Um, I wrote it real clear. Um, we'll have a full ability to essentially decrease whatever is not needed by following here. Need is arbitrary, need is determined by the budget commission. And the burden proof is placed on the tax authority entity to say, we will be sending this money next year.
The alternative is that amendment that comes to, that's a good part of.
It's a small part, but that's a good part because there are some.
It's, it's small in, in theory, but actually that aspect as well keeps that oversight for taxpayers moving forward. And the rest of the bill is very strong. That school fees, I, I promise you, I'm on many dark boards across the state. Uh, because we're, and, and, and law enforcement, oh, and that's, that's the frustrating thing. I think we had a FOP head come into our committee on Wednesday and testify. And I'm posting the video, I think tomorrow night. Um, of the question, but essentially, we all need our police, we want our police, we're gonna still pay for that service. Of course, the question is, still be on the property owner, now that burden? Or do we wanna pay for our sheriff department or our local police department on the sales tax, around the income tax base? Those services will still be there. It's just, the voters should kinda have more than say over what aspects.
But, but like you mentioned, you're taking it away from you guys and you're putting it on us. Because we're gonna have to raise sales tax.
So right now, it's on you anyway?
We're not as much.
But, yes, um, cause every three years and in between that, so like, I mean, I would never accuse you of this or say this, but some people can say that with the value increases, you've essentially raised taxes by twenty and a half million dollars every year. Um, from the revaluation that occurred in twenty twenty four. So taxes have increased and the voters didn't actually have a say over that.
They didn't vote for that. There's increases on.
So on the sales tax side, you'll be giving them, or you could do a three O vote and that sales tax will be placed um for the county moving forward. Uh, they were placing that before the voters and the sales tax would be paid for by county residents, but also all the folks that go into the C L A, scrapper. It's a lot to think about. It's a lot to, um, but remembering where we are in the grand picture of things. There's this wall and our taxpayers are at this wall. And we have to do big things because that around those increases in trouble Nashville across the state.
And I think too, Commissioner, you know, the reason the fear that these levies are gonna fail is because exactly what Rep Thomas just said, taxpayers are, are maxed out. They're paying way too much in property taxes. And every year we come, schools, local communities, county, whatever is coming to ballot and saying, well, we need increases in police and fire. We need increases in, which all of that is warranted and important. But when they're maxed out over here, they're not gonna vote over here for approvals. So we, to Rep Thomas's point, you gotta lower it over here so that when you do offer levies to the ballot, to the voters, you say, hey, if you want your neighborhood safe, you gotta vote for this levy. Instead of being maxed out over here and then asking them that, you lower this and you allow them the opportunity to vote. And I suspect, and, and I've, I've, I've lived in this county all my life. I, I don't know anybody that wouldn't be willing to vote to have their families protected by our law enforcement or, or our fire in, in neighborhoods. I, I, I just, I'm, I'm like, a lot of you mentioned the FOP and some of the police organizations are coming and saying that they're against this. I, I would be very hard pressed that anybody in my neighborhood that I live in my community in Niles would say, well, we don't want to support our police and fire. And we don't wanna have them driving down our neighborhoods and keeping our families safe. I just don't buy that.
I, I agree with you, but, but. If I agree with what you're saying, then why, why do a lot of police levies fail then? I mean.
Because they're maxed out over here, Commissioner.
And, and, and when they, so when you lower this, they're gonna say, well, you lowered me over here. Now you want me to give it back to you over here. And, and, and that's all education. They're gonna have to educate them and that's a process and they're gonna say, you took it here and now, now you're grabbing.
Commissioner, we're elected.
And they're gonna be saying, well, you're, you're grabbing more over here.
We're elected to lead though. And so it, it, it would have to be up to us to lead and tell our, our voters and our constituents that, you know, this is important for our services. If, if you wanna have officers driving through your neighborhood, you gotta vote for this levy. This is very important for the sustainability of our police and fire. And so, uh, you know, I think, I think that's, that's the point is, everybody wants to pass the buck and say, well, the state should solve it. Where local counties should solve it, but, but now we're coming up with proposals and the alternative is gonna be far worse. If that amendment passes, it's, it's gonna restructure all of, all of the state of Ohio and all of local governments.
But that's going forward, whether this passes or it doesn't, and that's the problem, I mean.
We will handcuff ourselves though, to essentially all but encourage, oh, yes, because it'll show that we're not actually making changes from taxpayers. And they're gonna see that no decreases are coming. I always ask folks, would you rather pay a little more in sales tax or less property tax, especially seniors? Nine out of ten, absolutely.
Not ten, but in the city of Warren, we have fifty percent houses are rental units. And the landlord may or may not raise the rent and this property taxes go up. Those are the people now who are gonna have to pay more that don't pay it now, cause they don't own property, they don't own land. And what scares me is the high number of people that don't own property in this county and now. You know, I, I get it. I mean, I get that part of it, but that worries me when it comes to a vote.
Yeah, well, most renters, uh, obviously all renters pay the property tax through their rent. Either if it's one for one, I always say every landlord, show your renters their tax bill. Actually, Nashville, we send a tax bill to every single property. That way the renters see it. They know how much went up, how much the portion of the rent's filling up. Um, every rebound, rent will go up because their tax bill went up tremendously. Now, question being, tax bill goes down, the landlord, all of a sudden decrease rent? That's to say, probably not.
Probably not.
But uh, the opposite certainly happens now where when the tax bill goes up, landlord definitely passes that along.
Maybe.
If it is not like subsidized or if it's not certain, uh, federal, federal. That's, I'm always happy, I talk to both of you, we, we introduced it. Um, I was happy to answer the questions or there's gonna be more expressions, as you said. Um, or tax restructuring happening. We, even if everything in household three thirty five passed, there's still a lot more that has to happen with the software tax system. Just because it's so massive, there's some investors to it. But um, we're moving forward with other reforms starting summer two. Now, keep you guys up to date what that looks like.
Well, we're gonna deal with it when we deal with it, I guess, it's.
I, I, I mean, they, I mean, you hear all of the, you know, the other side.
But, but as far as what is in your control today, Commissioner, as you put it, absolutely, as Rep Thomas discussed, lower property taxes for twenty twenty six.
Which will result in less money in our budget next year.
Yep.
Which we're already in rock bottom.
Right, I know you're very tight fiscal.
Yeah, but, and, and I mean, but.
So we're gonna lower and raise one our own.
But the point is, I mean, we had your reevaluation, then the county could have said no.
Yes, it's in twenty seven.
And that's something.
Yeah, you all present them before.
Yeah, so if, if you come out of, we could say no, we're gonna keep it as well.
And one aspect of this report might be that, um, if we don't get the inside village piece in this bill, a concept might be that you won't necessarily have a choice to say no. It might just be moving forward. You know, this is your inside village revenue and values increase, you won't receive it anymore. This, most counties aren't even open to that dialogue we sat about not having increases. Um, so I'm gonna see that might be reform. We're all trying to do the same thing. We're all trying to serve our taxpayers the best. I totally know your stand, your guys' limitations, frustrations with budgets, that looks like. So we wanna try and be a resource and help.
Sure.
Outside of this conversation, but we know where our taxpayers are standing and, and we gotta respond somehow.
Well, I, I agree. Yeah, they want lower taxes. There's no question about that. And the only way to, only way for us to do that is, is we're gonna have to cut services. I mean, because you either have to raise taxes or cut services, sorry.
I know your health insurance costs are up. I know all the cost for supplies, but here's office with those different things that are happening with, you know, past spending, it's up, everything is up. So I know you're kind of competing.
And we've had tremendous union contract raises over the last year and more to come.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent.
On the first. More exciting.
We could talk about household three thirty five for ten hours. We even hit free fifty five. Um, so capital progress and what your kind of.
Let's start, let's start the outpost of, in, um, Auburn Field, Auburn Brookfield, right? Um. But about a week ago, the ODOT's attorney came back and I believe he said that it could happen for like a hundred fifty thousand. Okay, um, I would be getting for nothing, like a dollar for ninety nine mils. I, so you guys help us out with that?
Well, I, I think you should work with your consulting team. Uh, Commissioner, and I, I think they, they will have to be able to. I mean, we're happy to talk to ODOT on your behalf and say, hey. Yeah, and, and I, I think, I think you had sent me a letter. That's not true.
No, we talked.
Okay, okay. Um, but I, I think I don't know if it's the role of a state legislator to get involved in negotiations between the county commissioners and ODOT. But I do, I do think we can support you and, and emphasize our support on our end saying, hey, can we come to some sort of an agreement? Um, and I don't know what conversations you've been having with ODOT, so there's a lot of kind of unknowns.
I personally haven't had any because I think the engineer. He's had something, maybe David's had something.
Okay, Richard, Commissioner Henry's reached out to me a couple of months ago. I called ODOT and said, what's the best deal you can give us? This is for the public good. There's no, you know, you don't need it anymore. They said, well, we own the market, we match about two hundred fifty thousand dollars for it. We put a lot of money into it. You're responsible for us, just walk away from it. I said, I get it, but also it's for the public good, tax three dollars went into it. What can we see in terms of a vote? They said, well, we'll work with engineer, we're still working with them and we'll kind of negotiate that through. It sounds like a hundred fifty.
I think that's what they said last week, but we'd like to get it down a little bit more.
It wouldn't help for you to maybe follow up and just say.
I can, I can give, uh, right, it's his name, I can give him that out. No, you go.
I will, uh. And, and then the other thing, I mean, if it's, I mean, if we can come and have a negotiated price and then we like to have some years, you know, that it's five years or ten years to pay for it, you know, that, I think that's a good reasonable.
Sure.
Um, some type of, you know, so we don't, you know.
Okay, that's one, that's one.
Go ahead.
Um, nine one dispatchers that talked about for years and years, reclassify them as first responders. Uh, and that helps out with everything from their retirement to their wages to state recognition. Um, they, they're represented by police and fire unions, yet they're clerical, they're in, in times of emergency and need. As we saw through COVID, they basically ranked the same secretary and there's nothing wrong with that.
And, and the other thing is the sheriff, I'm sure you've had conversations. And, and the other thing is the sheriff, sure, you've had conversations.
Yeah.
And, uh, he wants his correctional officers also to be, uh.
Now, does the county pay for, for these roles if, if we do get them to become um, first responders? Or, so, so what's the cost on the county?
Re-classified thing, sometimes their, their scale will go up, depending on your unit contract.
That's right.
And what that negotiation is. I asked the sheriff about, I warned him, I said, would you could reclassify your jail folks as first responders, but would that actually increase the cost and then you have to let them go, or what that looks like? He didn't think there'd be any.
I don't, I don't think there'd be a cost to us.
Okay.
I believe on the backend, as far as their retirement and their, their status, that they begin in qualification for some grants, uh, being under safety services rather than where they are.
Got it, okay. Well, and because we're talking about property taxes and how these everybody is, them advocating for, but these change rates, I want to make sure that we're all supporting.
We all know what they do. Especially the correctional officers and the, you know, spokes, uh, comes with nine one one. So, I guess, perfect summer project for suspicion I work with our drafting folks, see what actually are the implications. I asked my actual chair, he said he's on board with that.
Most don't realize, when you talk to most legislators, even the governor, they are shocked to hear that they're not first responders.
Sheriff Wilson's association, I asked him, what does your association say? Is there a reason why they're not responders? He shared that their association said, but for no reason, just no one's ever.
Right, right.
Right. Nine one one dispatchers don't go to the same train as Fire Department, correct?
No, but they, they do have their own training of saving lives on the phone, they have a protocol.
So I would say that. Sorry, I got tired of not talking.
No, you're, you're.
Forty-five minutes, maybe, silently, is a, is a harder day for Kristen.
You're welcome to weigh in.
The COs though, they typically go through very similar. I saw their, it just wasn't that worked stuff, so.
We looked at this for other clients and one of the things that, uh, came up with why the classifications were different, was the different classifications of trade.
Makes sense. I agree with your concern.
Yeah, so that, this is why we.
Unfortunately, unfortunately.
We'll look into what that.
There, there wasn't something in there as far as when COVID hit, they had to keep working. Although they were still just clerical and now the other clerical was mandated, they had to work statewide. They did and then qualify for certain incentives and I guess that probably would be pay or reimbursed or paid through the feds or.
I forget how they developed that classification, so obviously, you know, it was up to like every office, are you essential or not? I went through that. I know, Sheriff, he said, the COs went to, um, scrap first responder night. They could get discount because they were considered first responders. Um, so that's a, you know, that's an, you know, um, where I think we, we look to that. That just makes sense.
Good. Um. Again, I guess we can touch on Coroner. Now, that is something right now, um, when the hospital went under the first time.
Yeah.
We were notified that Coroner was pulled out of there, because he was worried about going there and having the doors locked. So at that time, um, we talked about moving him into the building on Chestnut, our old health department. With the cost of retooling that building was at north of two million dollars because of the ventilation and the, uh, lift, the elevator lift we needed, the way the building was configured. We said, that's not feasible. So now he's in a garage, EMA. And the employees are still over there, which is fine. But we need to find a place for him to be able to do their autopsies and duties. We're one of, one of the only, I think, nine counties in the whole state to have a forensic pathologist. The next closest would be Akron, kind of the county. And for us to have the ability, that shortens the response time of court cases, murders, everything. My hard guy getting it done in four weeks instead of four months. Um, we don't want to jeopardize losing him. And, but we can't, he, he needs better conditions to work in. So there's, we need something somehow.
So this is two and a half million dollars. Well, this is the quintessential example of our future push. We're gonna talk about starting in the summer of shared services among counties in this case. So personally, this is one of the reasons in the house budget, you know, we removed the coroner as an elected official position. There's no reason four or five counties couldn't come together, essentially share that type of operation. Because every county is strapped with coroner aspect and shipping bodies out. Having all, no, all just across the state, super expensive.
A building overhead.
So a, a building idea, like if we could have some type of concept of you all working with, um, Ashtria.
Well, there, there's a legality issue. Our coroner had said if the law were changed, our guy would be able to write autopsies for Carroll, Columbiana, um, Ashtria, Biola, Giaga. They, they, they weren't particularly fond of murders in Mahoney County because they're so expensive, it takes so long. Nobody said that they would be able to do that and they could bring in some assistance to do it on weekends. But there was a law prohibiting a coroner from making money from the other county somehow.
Could you? We could find that.
Yeah, we, we need to talk to Dr. DeMeco and find out. Because there was a barrier, he wanted to do that plan.
Okay.
But there was a barrier legally where he wasn't allowed to do that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, and, and that's the other thing. So, so I, I like, I agree with everything Rep Thomas said related to, you know, shared services. And if there is a law or some roadblock that's stopping us from sharing services, I think we would be super interested in trying to remove that. Taking all that aside though, with this building or any building that you want to discuss today, the other component too, is there has to be skin in the game from the county. So when we're talking about budgets and funding and you're strapped and all of those things, the state isn't just going to write you two million dollars and hope for the best and plan for the worst, which is why you have consultants now. They can help you structure and formulate what that ask actually looks like. So, you know, when, when we're asking for a coroner building or a new nine one ones center or a new dog pound, which I know that I bet you that's coming next. Um, we have to, we have to be able to say, well, the county's putting this skin in the game, the state can put this, we got this federal grant. Help us get over the edge.
And, and we are working towards that. As far as. We do have a potential plan where we can move our EMA director to the old fire department that we own at the fairgrounds. But that needs about three hundred thousand dollars with the park to get it functioning. Then we move the coroner into his building and then just do the upgrades. That's the cheapest route for us to do all this. But it still requires a little bit more money than what we have. Uh, and then moving on again to the dog pound. We did do, we got the land acquired, we did, we got the architecture's rendition.
That's good.
Now we just need some money to rain on it to get the shovel on the ground.
Well, and the other component too, and your consultants will help you with this, is qualifying for grants. So, you know, and, and they, they are all experts, so I trust their, their advice and opinions to you. But oftentimes, when you look at face value on a grant, you say, well, I never would qualify for this, or our nine one one center won't qualify. But if you pull in the right park and you make it, you know, if you think outside the box, which they, they will be able to help you to do, you then now automatically qualify for some of these grants. So my point is, is lean on them very heavily because I, I think, and it's no shot or no disrespect for, to our county commissioners, I think we've thought very siloed for a very long time. And it's now time to start thinking broader and starting thinking creatively. Because otherwise, we're gonna continue to get out beat. Money's gonna continue to go to Cleveland and Cincinnati and all these other major metro cities. Because they are thinking creatively, they are thinking outside of the box and they are thinking regionally. So lean on them to help you qualify for grants. Don't just find a grant and say, well, we never qualify, this is, this is silly. You have to bring in the right partners and regionalize and make it, make yourself qualify for it, is my advice. And no, I, I have confidence they'll be able to, yeah.
I have one question, if I may. When will you guys start discussing, we know last capital cycle was special because it was all a one-time extra infusion. When will you start knowing, discussing what the capital budget's gonna look like, just for us to have that timeline?
Start now.
Okay.
Yep.
And what, what do you guys think, like, you know, I, I would, I don't want to pressure you, but it's kind of nice, sort of on record. What do you guys think is a more safe project ask? Five hundred K, seven fifty, does it depend if it's safety services versus other things? Is that really your discretion? Uh, that helps us to like, you know, we have folks who want to come in and they go, well, we're gonna ask for five million to this, those state reps.
They're never gonna get it.
Well, exactly. I tell them that and they tell me, no, no, I know we're gonna get that. And I'm like, no, we're not. So, it, it, being that I'm going to assume this capital cycle's gonna be tighter. Am I, I'm, I know I'm correct in that assumption. So are we going to be strategic in more projects, smaller amounts? Or just really hit on the regional need? Because you guys are gonna have a lot of discretion in that. We'll work with you, everybody together in a, you know, a strategic capacity. But I like to just get your thoughts as best as you can, where you think that's gonna go.
I'll be too. So, yeah, so, so, um, I, I think, so everything you said is right, Kristen. So the, the first component is as far as what is the appropriate amount? I think what the state wants, the state always wants to finish a project, they never want to start a project. Meaning, that's why I said you've got to find external funding sources to beef up your budget. And then you come to us and say, if you give us five hundred thousand, we'll never ask you for another penny again. But when the commissioners, with all due respect, and I love both of them very much, when they say, well, we need two million dollars, I'm like, I wish I had it for you. Because there's no way I can pull money, two million dollars and just hand it over. There has to be skin in the game and the windup has to be legislature and the sell has to be the legislature. Just give us this little bit of money and we'll leave you alone. That, that's the first step. The, the second thing I would say that's important is regionalization and shared services. I think you hit the nail on the head and I think Rep Thomas did a nice job there too. We are losing population in the state. We cannot afford to continue to fund things at the level we're doing. That includes county government, that includes local governments, that includes school districts. We have to start, I'm not gonna say consolidate, but we have to start sharing services. The more you can do that, the better the sell is to the speaker, to the senate president and all the other powers that be down in Columbus. Um, I would say the third thing, as far as the amount of the ask, um, that's dependent on the project. Uh, you, you know, if, if you're able to secure funding sources of grants and other things and you come to us and say, well, this project's two fifty, two hundred fifty thousand, and this project's five hundred thousand, well, that's an easy sell to the speaker, because I could say, well, look, for almost a million bucks speaker, I hit two projects in my district and my county, we're happy campers. But when they're two million and two million, you're gonna have to prioritize them for me. Because I, I'm not gonna be able to go in and say, because a lot of horse trading takes place, where, you know, this county gets this project, so what does this county want? Well, this county has all of these things. Yeah, but what do you actually want? Oh, I, it, you know, I'm not gonna be able to call you at the eleventh hour and say, well, do you want this or do you want this? So the more external sort of resources you can gather together, compile it and package it, the easier it is for me or Rep Thomas to sell it to the leadership team and the speaker.
Which one do you think? Essentially, regionalizes or shares services most saves the most charitable taxpayer dollars. Um, and it's most impactful for your residents here across the county or even outside of town.
The coroner, because the nine one one. Mahoney County is already inundated with their own. We've got more than twenty-five police departments with our own. They, they can't handle any more than what they have. And Dog Pound, they're overwhelmed. Right now, I, I got a message yesterday from, um, another uh, dog services, that they've got seventy-two dogs because our dog pound is full. And the Health Arts Symposium is full. So there's, for us to combine something like that with another county, they don't have the space.
Yeah.
And there's no way. So I think the only one maybe feasible a little bit would be the coroner.
My, my other advice too, if I may, Rep Thomas, is, and Kristen, maybe I look to you for this. Well, and, and this has always been my posture, I ran on this and campaigned on this, is I, I've always felt that our county, as well intended as we are, and I would argue maybe even Mahoning and Columbiana as well, we don't do a good job of identifying assets and then investing in those assets. And so what I mean is, instead of, and I'm happy to hear, Commissioner, that you're trying to shuffle people around to fill abandoned buildings. Because what I want to avoid is us having to build another building where now the county is gonna be, continue to be a landowner and have to maintain that building. Because what happens is, we fund a project, we build this beautiful shiny building, we don't have the sustainability to maintain it, so it starts to deteriorate. Well, then everybody's priorities shift and then we want to build a new building or something else that's shiny and important. So then the state comes in and we offer resources, we build this building, while this one's still deteriorating, we're trying to build something else. So I think what's important to do is identify what assets we have in the county. How can we utilize those assets and how can the state be a supporting player in that?
Well, not to interrupt you, but we could make that move with, with, uh, EMA and, and, uh, the coroner right now. Move, uh, uh, EMA to the fire station, you need X amount of dollars to complete the renovation there and then to complete the renovation, uh, EMA for the coroner. Those are two quick fist, fixes for us. We had what's that, three hundred thousand.
Three hundred is EMA.
It's the EMA.
But anywhere between three hundred million for the coroner. Depending on its ventilation and.
And, and the only problems, and, and the only other cost that we would have is having a tower out there for EMA at.
Yes, that was my, that was my next one. We need a tower at the fairgrounds for a couple of reasons. One.
Are you talking about a Mars Tower?
No, I'm talking about a radio tower.
Radio tower.
And the reason being is the, the residents on the west side of the lake don't have very good cell service at all. And when the fair comes, they have zero.
It's true.
So we were able to talk, uh, to work with, um, Steve Christian, he escaped two years ago. After it was the fair, nobody had service, I reached out to them. We contracted with a company, he come and he gave us four, um, mobile cell towers last year and worked great.
That's good.
We're doing it again this year. It worked great for the fair. But our nine one one moving to the downtown Corlin, one of their necessities is a tower. Fairgrounds needs a tower. We've also been, uh, doing research that Verizon, AT&amp;T and T-Mobile would run from our tower if we put one up. Towers are about a million bucks. So we have the opportunity of killing three birds with one stone. Communication, our dispatch services, the residents here around, uh, emergency services through nine one one, EMA. With, we have the space at the fairgrounds, that would be something too, that we would ask you. And we're gonna ask our, our grant person to help us find money for the startup for the tower. We think it could pay for itself in a few years, but we need the initial kick to get that thing up and running. If we do, it's gonna provide service for a large chunk of our population.
Yeah, I, so I, I'm, I'm all supportive of, of that. I'm happy to be as supportive as, as needed. Is, would that tower need to be contracted between the county and like AT&amp;T or a provider or how?
So some, if it's a government-owned tower, then those entities will pay the government to be on the tower.
Okay.
You could also ask private industry, would, are, is there interest in them building and owning the tower themselves?
See, there's.
There's two ways to go about.
Okay.
I, I happen to know someone at some, some telecommunications places that I could ask this question to, so.
To, now.
Out of curiosity.
So thanks, Kristen, for the clarification. That's good to know. What I will say to both of you commissioners and, and to the consultants, and they know this because I get lots of emails from them, which is a good thing. Um, we are willing to write letters of support for grants, any grants or any funding sources that you find, whether it's local grant, state grant or federal grant. Why is that important? Because we created a Lake to River Caucus. Um, where we now have representatives from all the way to the tippy top of Ashtria County, including Rep Thomas, all the way down to Columbiana County that are signing on to letters of support. Why is that important? Because in the past, we would notice that a local community in Warren was applying for the same grant that a local community in Ashtria County was applying for. So I would write a grant for Warren, Rep Thomas would write one for Ashtria. And maybe one of us would get it or neither of us. But now what we've all agreed to do is work together, which we're a bipartisan group, Democrats and Republicans are a part of it. We're working really, really well together, probably the best I've ever seen in, in, in our region since I've been involved in government affairs. Um, we're all working together, we're all, we're all signing on to each other's letters because if something, if Rep Thomas gets an award in his county, that helps Trumbull. If we get an award in Trumbull, that helps Ashtria or Mahoney. So my point is, is as your consultants find grants for you and you guys start to think creatively, we're willing to write letters of support where you'll have all six of our names on this letter to submit with your application, rather than just Nick Santuchis because it's in Warren or Rep Thomas because it's in the northern part of Trumbull. You're now getting six state reps. Now, not all state reps sign on to them sometimes. You're now getting six state reps. Now, not all state reps sign on to them sometimes because there are competing interests that we, you know, we're not gonna pressure our colleagues. But so far collegiately, we've been working the best I I felt we've ever been. So my point to you is, is. Utilize us as a resource as as you're seeking grants and your consultants will be able to do that. Pull us in where you need us and then work with them where they can help you think outside the box to solve some of these problems.
And what I think is valuable for you guys to know is once your operating budget is passed, we'll go through department by department. Basically building out a strategy of what they're gonna be eligible to go after based on these priority projects, like what what are they gonna be able to? Act, ask OCJS for, once we know what's what the funding levels are. And we'll, we'll make sure your offices just have a good, have a copy of the strategy of what we're doing, just so you know. Hey, they're gonna go after this state grant in September, they're probably gonna come for a letter. And I will say, you got, you have been fantastic, unequivocally fantastic in giving us letters of support for our grants. And it is the best working relationship I've seen from a regional delegation in my twenty year. So hats off. I, you know, I always give credit where credit is due, so hats off to your leadership on that.
Thank you.
One of the other things uh. On the list that we haven't really had a chance to discuss with Mr. Bernard yet either is the thirty eleven project. Which I know you guys briefed on a little bit about Route thirty and Route eleven, the natural gas line up to Lake Erie through Chobe County. And in the research and meetings I've had so far, it seems like that is one way that we can actually bring natural gas to our constituency.
It's gonna be huge, Commissioner.
And and this is something that, short of that, you know, the people on the east side of the county that don't have natural gas right now. You may never have a chance to get it. So this is a project that we'll need to work with the Lake to River Coalition. And that is still Carroll Star County.
Sure.
Um, and but that's something that they wanna run a pipeline from thirty and bringing up Route eleven, Lake Erie. To bring natural gas up to where they can potentially do condensed natural gas and ship it. Uh on on boats to the world, but right out of coming up through our county, which could also open up. Uh oil and gas exploration.
Sure.
Like the whole rest of the state got the money that that comes with that.
So um I I could touch on that if that's okay, Rep Tom. So um thanks to David and our other colleagues in the Lake to River uh Caucus. We all submitted that language for the Route eleven pipeline. Um and the Senate. Uh we we had the the funding in the House, the Senate kept it, which is good. So we have the Lake to River study um funded, so that that money, hopefully if it stays through negotiations, that that study will get funded now. What will happen is after we get the funding for the study, we'll implement the study, we'll get that, those, that feedback back. And then we'll determine what the next cost is to actually get the pipeline built and what that'll all look like. Conversations I've had with federal uh delegation, which is Bernie Moreno and and John Houston, senators. And Congressman Joyce for that matter, uh have all been supportive. They're willing to step up. I think once we get the study done, I, from my understanding, they're willing to help us identify additional funding sources to actually get the pipeline built. So to be determined, we're in the process. That one of all the things that we talked about today, I'm fairly confident will stay um in the budget, but you know, we'll we'll see. But Rep Thomas was really instrumental too in helping us.
Is the only thing that stayed?
It was.
Wow, so that shows, I yeah, and it shows the importance of that, that whole, every year change. Have natural gas now, have development, have, take for better or worse, something we might like that.
It's gonna be huge though.
It's gonna be good.
At least you'll have the opportunity.
Yep.
Right, it's gonna be a big deal for economic development.
No, that's what we we often overlooked. There are people in our own county that don't get good cell service, don't get high speed internet, don't get natural gas.
That's true.
I mean, that's something, those are, and don't get water, don't get sewer. I mean, so there's, those are all things. Now, of course, sewer and water, we've talked about a bunch.
Right.
We have, we did have sewer and water uh cut out of Anheuser Mark. And cut out our state budget, Mosquito Lake uh had their budget cut. As far as any studies they had for uh infrastructure around the lake, that was removed when it hit the Senate. Um, that's something, of course, we always want to keep fighting for, because we know we're gonna need. To provide services in northern part of the county.
No doubt.
No, we're we're gonna need you guys involved in that. We're gonna need the state involved um for. Um. Expanding infrastructure.
Happening, but I I wanna go back to the coroner's question. Do you think, you think the court, the state are in a negative position or not? Because i- if we're gonna make a move here in the coroner's office, we don't wanna spend a bunch of money and then. If we have to go regional or something like that.
They pulled that back out, yeah.
Yeah, the Senate, the Senate has now kept the corner as a negative position. Um, negotiations, House, Senate, regardless of what happens with that, I think you have the opportunity, especially if you're a pathologist that lives here. To be able to coalesce different counties together. Look at that law that says, you know, because I know that the Franklin County coroner is the, I'm Montgomery County pathologist. So there there is some of that already happening now across counties, change the sounds. But even if it doesn't stay in a negative position, you're still gonna have to have that service.
Sure.
And why not then Trumbull County be the?
Oh, yeah.
And the law. The law.
I'll.
Tomorrow.
The states.
On the park.
Yeah.
This one's what's best, citizens.
And I can't blame him.
Um, but of course, we have to look and see what, what restrictions he. You put the brakes on, there were some restrictions there that worried him, some red flags.
So that that's helpful for us to know, essentially, you all stay in touch with us about what might be needed to finalize that. I'm assuming like October time period.
Uh for capital budget, um I I think conversations now are good. Start building your plans and your phased out, you know, approaches. And then once, once we pass the operating budget, we'll move into fall time and then we'll probably start collecting um applications early next year.
Well, what we're trying to do is, Annie and Kristen, the two questions next week. We're gonna try to get some of that unused A or B money and see if we can't bring it back in, reallocate it. To help with um EMA and the coroner's office. If we could get that money.
Worth a try.
And if we can do that through the treasurer's office, that could be a huge help for us. Then then we have skin in the game.
Sure.
And then we can come to you and say, okay, we have this money, we're investing it here, now help us finish it off.
That's right. Fair, fair enough, and I think worth a try.
And 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 just hopefully we can get them to say, okay, you guys could reallocate that money.
Yeah, I think.
The Senate bill, they got the um. Justice Center in Ashtria and got the Safety Center, Safety Services Center in Corlin. When does one of those come around again?
That was capital. So so what we're talking about is the projects now we're describing, I'm, we're winding you up for capital.
Okay, which is every other year.
Yeah, it's right. So we passed the operating budget this week or next, this upcoming week. And then, and then next year.
It does pretty large, large sums of big guns, right? Well, that, that was for that one time.
Yeah, right.
It's all the federal one time money that was used in conjunction with the capital budget. Issue two that we always pass allows us to borrow for this every other year.
Right.
So we're having a lot less money out of the last five years because all that was federal money that was put in for the Justice Center.
That was kind of a once in a lifetime budget that we had because that, I mean, that that will probably never happen again.
Yeah, we're gonna be back to normal life cycle.
Right.
That that might stay up.
Two hundred billion dollars versus like several.
That's right. So don't, if if your expectation is that level. You know, you have to.
I just don't, like, we didn't know about that.
No, sure.
That was something that.
That's why I wanted to talk to you guys and like have this kind of meeting now.
Right.
So that would be, you've got one, two, three, here's roughly the money amounts, here's the answer, you've got your consultant. And then come fall time, we'll actually formally get, yeah, what we came from you guys for a time. We'll both be on, which is excellent too, if that helps.
Yeah.
I do obviously have the recourse in the county. Now, so there'll be some of that stuff.
But that is, yeah, we need to open the communication because that was something, again, you know, we we talked about that and I called you and said, how the heck did? Sandy get all that money fresh, we said, wasn't just her, there was, they got a consultant up there, they have. Their people were on the ground working on this for years, they have been working on it. So now we're, we have to lay the bricks for when that next time comes, we're the ones prepared. And, you know, we get the the biggest cut, or as big of a cut.
That was their fourth time, I think, requesting that money for. Justice Center actually was, so it was a long time.
Hopefully, we don't have that much longer.
That's what they got, that'll be good for them.
Yeah, it's good for the county if you're funding them.
And Corbin got, Corbin got a nice, you know, they got funded.
And I think they have a bunch of shared services through that.
Well, and that's why they got it. Yeah, because essentially that idea of being, that'll be a spoken wheel for emergency services in northern part of the county.
Yeah, they wanted that, them to be the hub, that's to be the hub. So that's why I say there's a lot of components that you have to, you have to start thinking outside the box.
And one of the hardest parts is grants require strategic planning. And our region is not done as well as we should have. You can't have a project and ask these guys to fund it. When we have a strategic plan for it.
Right.
And that's why we're, we're excited and we're gonna lay that strategy out. So when we're coming to them, it will be last dollars in. So, I I mean, that's one of the the things I harp with our firm the most. Is that this is, we do good engineering and good architecture planning, we don't do grant planning. We're not gonna be successful if we don't build, where do you wanna be in five years? Those discussions have to start now, and especially talking about ten, twenty, thirty million dollar projects. Unless somebody's, unless a private entity's coming in and dropping fifteen million in it. We need to plan out and build that financial strategy and that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna get you some fast, small wins in the short term, so everybody sees the direction, but the big dollars are gonna take some time. That's just a reality. I've been doing this for twenty years. You're not gonna get that five, ten million dollar project in a two year cycle. It's gonna be four years, six, so.
And and that's the point is having a vision of where we wanna take the county, whether it's Coroner, Dog Pound or these projects, that's all fine. Kristen can help and her team can help you with that vision and actually implement it rather than just saying. Cause a lot of what we're talking about, commissioners, is damage control. The these buildings are in deplorable condition because they've been overlooked and neglected for so long. Well, now it's an emergency and you're coming to us, which I'm more than happy to fight for. It's just not gonna be on the timeline probably that you wish would happen. And the reason that timeline is is different is because we're not executives. If I was the governor and I had pots of money in different departments I could pull from, I would be able to try to send you some monies. Uh there's only certain timeframes that I can get dollars and Rep Thomas can get dollars for the county. And then on top of the timelines or timeframes, there's certain qualifications that these projects have to meet too. So it's not just, and that's why I started this conversation by saying you guys are executives of your county. You have pots of money and budgets that you move around to do things with. We don't get that luxury. We we have to work within the system that we're elected to. Um, so I I hope that's just more clear for everybody in the room and for the kind of management, the expectations moving forward of of where we're going.
I assume we'll have some one that is the wall, asking for this.
Right.
So like the Warren, possibly Niles, the Gerard, you know, parts of Ashtria people too, so. The more that you can plan to get it done now, the more the application, the better your application will be.
Sure. And and you know, we talked about, you know, partnerships and shared services. Are there other local communities that you can bring in to an application? That if we get an award, they get a little hunk of that money too. So, you know, one thing I talked with the mayor and I was about was repainting the bridges over the the railroad tracks. Um because some of those bridges are real rusty and they look real bad. Well, that funding obviously didn't get in and that more of a capital budget anyway. But can you bring him as a partner? So now City of Niles is signing on to your thing and now we get a little bit of money for. Bridge painting and we get money for your coroner building. You see what I mean? I like, there there's, and maybe that's a bad example, but I'm thinking, you have to think outside the box to pull partners in. To qualify for more dollars and now you're hitting five or six projects. Because you got your coroner funded rather than just, well, we need, we need a dog pound and we need a coroner building.
EMA, coroner thing.
Right.
Example.
You agree, Kristen, or you said?
I mean, it's that, it's also like when I think about strategic planning. You know, I look at others, I I look at other states too and not, and like, okay, when other entities are building new dog pounds. In some other, in the New England states, they combine them with Vet Tech schools. Right? So and nobody in Ohio is doing that yet. So it's one that I stumbled on because I'm a nerd who looks at that stuff at three in the morning. So they do their, a lot of their dog pounds are connected with Vet Tech. So now you also have a training component and workforce development with your facility. So I, that's been playing in the back of my mind. I wanna think about your projects that way. Um and our our team is, I brought you my whole government division. So you can see that like we're going to str- strategize this thing and get it right. Um and I think that's something we can look at that then opens you up to different, a kind of potential dollars at the federal level and that workforce piece too. So it's like, how can we think, make you the example of the state? And how to do these things in a way that the state wants to see that collaborative.
Go with the rest for that.
Well, no, I mean.
We're deep that way.
Kristen's right, you know, you have Penn, Penn State, Trumbull, right down the road. We've got, there's plenty of higher educational institutions, I mean.
We have TCTC up there.
Yeah, and certain things that you obviously do, you got more.
Oh, oh, you got the air, the airport wanted to expand, have their flight school. They partnered with Y, she had made a curriculum now at the airport, so the funding wise comes in from everywhere.
And by doing that, Commissioner, now you, instead of, you now open up grant opportunities in the education space. So any education grants that are out there, you now qualify for those because they're a part of it. So it, and they will help you with with all assists.
Oh, and this is something too, I think. Mr. Myself and Mr. Amanda's kind of made a pledge at the beginning that we wanna be the, the board that stops kicking the can. And we've had many, many issues, as you've seen. Uh the cans been kicked down the road for the next word to deal with. You guys are in the same boat. You come in with a new administration, different political party. Dealing with a lot of cans we kicked down the road, i.e. property tax. Um, so we're well, we wanna work with you on these things. At the same time, we do understand, the public needs to understand, it's gonna be a little pain with change. But the change ultimately could be good and the healing could be quick and we could be.
It's true.
Stronger and better after we come through it. But I don't wanna make any rash moves or decisions, but at the same time. I I do like the opportunity to be the one to make it better. Eh even though, you know, when you set a bone, you might have to re-break it or whatever, it's gonna be pain until that bone sets and heals. We're in the process of doing some of that right now.
Well, we're in the process of having a plan.
And a two and a five and a ten year plan.
Which, which we never had.
Right.
Okay, and and we need that plan. Once we get a plan. And then two, five, ten years down the road, once we set the plan in motion, doesn't really matter who's here because we already have a plan.
Right.
You know, and and that's why we hired, you know, K O consultant to help us formulate that plan, because we we definitely need a plan.
Well, and Rep Thomas, and I, I think I can speak frankly here, but Rep Thomas and I want you to be successful in that plan too. We want, I mean, I live here, I've lived here all my life. I want nothing more than Trumbull County to lead the state and and Ashtria for that matter too. Um, we have a lot of potential. I feel like oftentimes we take one step forward and then two steps back. This is a unique opportunity to take five steps forward and not turn back. So.
And with our consultant with you, we want Niles to chief, we want Warren to chief. If we put all our talents together with the nonprofit group and the chamber and the port. I mean, we're unstoppable force. We get everybody on the same page, in the same direction.
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for everything.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Keep saying.
Thanks for having us.
Keep reaching out.
Well, I do, but I will share with you that the coroner's cell phone number, and I would love for you to reach out to.
Yeah.
Maybe meet with them one on one or whatever.
Okay, we're meeting with the um um state John, uh Pickling.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, the building, but coroner was the payer, so I saw, I saw the body trailer of the, of the actual coroner.
Looks like something to eat at Deer Camp or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was like a bellist.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. So we have to formally.
We do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Adam Clark, I, sir.
Mister Malloy.
You have a motion?
Oh, I'm motion adjourned.
I'll second that.
Sir Bernard?
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Thank you, God.
Thank you.